Good evening and thank you all so much for coming out tonight. Please accept our apologies for running a few minutes behind. This is our call to order for our public hearing. Public hearing in reference to ordinance number 2023-12. An ordinance to adopt the 2023 multi-jurisdictional Williamsburg County Hazard Mitigation Plan to promote the public's health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Williamsburg County. Okay, and we will begin that public hearing, but we're going to begin that after we get a prayer from Councilman Jonathan Miller. Councilman Miller.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the opportunity to come together as a governing body of Williamsburg County. We ask you, Heavenly Father, that God our heart, soul, and mind, those decisions made tonight, we ask you, Heavenly Father, may it be in your name and for the benefit of our county citizen, we actually bless in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so kindly. Yes, yes, this is a public hearing. It's open. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lee Kane, and I work with the Waukamaw Regional Council of Governments, and our agency has been assisting the emergency management department with the development of this hazard mitigation plan, and it is a long-awaited product that the county desperately needs in order to be eligible for a lot of federal funding, especially in the wake of a disaster. So that way, you can respond to the needs of your community, to be able to be more resilient and to recover and ensure that your residents and your local economy can be able to respond. I do have a presentation, but I can just go over very briefly what some of this content is within the plan. It is something that is required by FEMA to be eligible for a number of different grant funding opportunities, and there are strategies within this plan that are locally driven. It was developed with input from all the different jurisdictions within the county, including your local emergency management division, but also a number of different departments that represent Williamsburg County. And so there was a lot of input into that process. There was a public survey that went out just identifying the interest of the residents and the things that were concerning them, and so we integrated that into the strategies of the plan that cover everything from public education about natural disasters and how to be prepared, ranging all the way to flood mitigation projects that may be necessary within the community. Here we go. And just in regards to the number of different grants, we've got probably a dozen or so that the county will now be eligible for once this plan is approved by not only your jurisdiction, but also has to be approved by South Carolina Emergency Management and then FEMA itself. We have started the review through South Carolina Emergency Management, and they have responded with just some very minor comments. We're going to be able to send the plan back to them, and they will be the ones to send it to FEMA for final review. So it is a multi-level review process, just to make sure that this plan meets all the requirements of FEMA to be approved. In relationship to the hazards that impact your community, this is probably of no surprise, but historical damages have been mainly from hurricanes, related flooding and wind, and then crop damage. So that's something that specifically with Hurricane Hugo, there was significant crop damage to the community, and knowing the agricultural nature of a lot of this area, it's really important for us to be able to consider that and be able to help respond in the event of a disaster, especially of that magnitude. Other things that, you know, you probably wouldn't think so much that would stand out with having so much damage would be severe winter storms, ice, and then also things like drought and damages again to crops. Of particular interest is that, you know, we are seeing changes with our rainfall amounts in this county. We are seeing an increase as well with the temperature, while quite minor in nature. That's things that really make us have to think about how climate is changing and how that may exacerbate some of the disasters in this community into the future. We looked at all the different jurisdictions and all the different hazards that are required by FEMA. We also looked at local information regarding housing, and just some highlights here is that a lot of the housing within Williamsburg County predates 1960, kind of falls into the 1960-1999 range of being the age range that's most frequent. And also of interest is that 40% of the housing stock is comprised of manufactured homes, which puts this county at higher risk compared to other communities, just because manufactured homes are not really designed to be able, especially older manufactured homes, are not designed to meet wind loading of hurricanes and higher wind storms. So it's something to consider, just to understand the vulnerability of your residents. Some important findings that came out of this, and this is again not just for Williamsburg County, but also for the jurisdictions within it, is that there is a need for additional building code and flood plane management staff. There is also a need to be able to provide assistance regarding housing, and these are things that kind of fall out of the area that FEMA can fund. These are things that locally your jurisdiction has to be able to consider with its budgeting process. The most frequent types of damages and historic damages, like I mentioned, hurricanes, flooding, winter storms, and drought, but Williamsburg County is also the most wildfire-prone county in the state. And I think, I'll say, you've probably been very fortunate in the fact you haven't seen a lot of major damages from wildfires. Some of that has to do with the rural nature of the community, but a lot of that has to do with just the fact that you've got a very strong fire department and the availability of water resources. And then also, I know something that people don't realize is the prevalence of being able to have waste management facilities for people to bring their trash can help reduce wildfires because people won't be burning trash on their own properties. So we have actually seen a decline in the number of wildfires in the last decade, so that's a positive thing that's happened within the county. We look at some overarching goals, and the overarching goals of this plan are really to improve the response capabilities of the county and the communities within it, to minimize loss of life and damages to property, and for there to be, just improve the capabilities to be able to get mitigation funding and do mitigation strategies, and also to improve our policies and regulations. So there's recommendations within the plan about some steps to take over the next five to 10 years to consider with that, and then also continued public education about what risks are prevalent to them. Like I said, we have gone through South Carolina Emergency Management Review. We're anticipating that after this review and third reading by council that we'll be sending that back as a full package to South Carolina Emergency Management for them to then send to FEMA. So that's really the next step in the process. Having the ordinance and resolutions from all the different communities that are involved in this process is a critical piece of this to ensure that there is support for the plan, and it's a requirement of FEMA in order to get the plan approved. I'm here for questions, whether from y'all or anybody from the public.
Yes, good afternoon. I didn't recall, why did you say Williamsburg County was more prone than some of the other counties in the state? I think you said it was the most prone county for fire hazards for multiple reasons.
A lot of it has to do with the type of vegetation, just the sheer amount of not-fragmented forest lands, and it also has to do with the history of wildfires in this county. There's a good track record. I think there's dating, dating back to the 1960s with wildfires, and it just has a higher prevalence, and that might be anything from maybe it does a better job reporting it versus other counties, or it may actually have more wildfires. And most of that, like I said, was more historical in nature. Over the last decade, we've seen a pretty sharp decline in those number of wildfires.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions or comments? You so much for your presentation tonight. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you and your colleagues at the COG for all the wonderful work and assistance that you do, that you guys give to Williamsburg County. You all are certainly a tremendous asset. I know I get on you all's nerves calling as much as I do, and, but I want to thank you all for always being there and answering those calls, and again, all of the assistance that you guys provide us, especially as it relates to grants and different things, and keeping us up to date with different things that are going on in the state and around the nation, across the nation. Again, I want to thank you all publicly. Anyone else have anything else? All right, it is 6:00 PM, and we want to call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. Councilman Miller has already blessed us with the invocation for this afternoon. At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes from our October 2, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Some movements, Jim.
We have a motion to accept the minutes by Councilman Woods. Is there a second?
Second. Councilman Miller.
Thank you. We have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion has been carried. Ordinances, there are, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. We do have one ordinance for third reading, and that's adoption of ordinance number 2023-12. An ordinance to adopt the 2023 multi-jurisdictional Williamsburg County Hazard Mitigation Plan to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Williamsburg County. That's the ordinance that we just had the public hearing on. Is there a, is there a motion to, or there's a motion to pass this hearing from Councilman Lee? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion has been carried. Thank you all so much. Other items, there's an appointment to the Williamsburg County First Steps Partnership Board, Act Number 81, Section 59-152-60. I think Mr. Benjamin Hall, who is the executive director at the Williamsburg County Library, has been serving in that capacity and wishes to continue to serve in that capacity. Is there a motion to name Mr. Hall back to this board?
Supervisor.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Man Floyd, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Appearances, we have Mr. W.E. Jenkinson, Secretary of the Williamsburg County Historical Society. Attorney Jenkinson, so good seeing you. Good evening.
Supervisor, members of council, glad to see you. As I have done in the past, I have, I'm coming before you on behalf of the Historical Society, and I'm going to give you a little handout very quickly. Remember I set a limit, also, put an annual budget limit, annual budget according to the supervisor, you know, annual budget this year. And obviously, I'm not here to issue you here, talking about the shortfall, the Kenny Head shortfall, and perfectly understand the necessity of not giving us the amount that we've been receiving many years in the past. Now, that being said, what we...
She doesn't mean...
That being said, that doesn't change our budget. This is the same budget we've been operating under for a number of years. This is not, as you can see, the top of this budget. Back in January, and this is based on last year's numbers and what we anticipated for this year's, we are not a profit-centered organization. We are the 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, busy company, providing and protecting the history of Williamsburg County. Now, I want to first thank you for the many years that you have financially contributed towards our society and the budget. As you can see, we were getting $6,000, and we're now getting $950. That's just facts. And we build our budget based on what we've been getting for years, and it is what it is. I'm not here, you know, it's just facts. You know what our Historical Society has been doing. We have just had the grand opening of our African-American Archives, which was extremely successful, and we thank you for your participation in that. That building was built with the assistance of Williamsburg County, not the financial assistance, but the Grants Department helped us work through and with the grants we obtained, build that facility and open it, as you have seen it. Very successful. Now, that being said, where is the society headed this year? The fact that we don't have money, I guess we're operating on a wing and a prayer, but what have we got going on? We just, two weekends ago, had a book signing by one of our Williamsburg County citizens who has gone on to become quite well-known in the medical field. She has written several books. She's now an author. She was one of the top urologists in Atlanta, and she was one of the first urologists in the country, female, because normally urologists would have been male, and she's quite a, Dr. Boone is just really well-known. She went to King Street Senior High School, graduated in the early 1980s, has a great following, and we had a wonderful book signing for her. Now, we are getting ready to have what we call our Monuments of Stone. This is something we've done for a number of years. We go to graveyards and have a party. We invite the community to come visit the graves, and we have docents explaining certain marked areas of famous people, of people worthy, so they'll know where it is. The Monuments of Stone this year will be the three graveyards, major graveyards in King Street. If you go out to Hemingway Highway, you got the African-American Cemetery on one side, Williamsburg Cemetery, and then the Jewish Cemetery. That will be coming up in the near future. I think it's scheduled for November, but you'll know about that and come, and that's going to be very informative. In the February, we're going to have our Founder's Day event. We've had those in the past, and we honor those who have gone before us and provided our heritage. This year, we are celebrating our founders as being the Jewish people who settled our community. I know when I was in high school, probably half of the merchants in downtown King Street were Jewish, and we had an active Jewish synagogue here. Many have left town, but there are still some here, and that will celebrate the Jewish heritage. We even have a Nobel Laureate in Medicine from King Street. I was in high school with him. Mr. Goldstein's son got a Nobel Prize in 1986, so that's going to be celebrated. One of the more interesting features is going to be a, we've cobbled together $4,000 to hire Stan Barnett. You know Stan. Stan is going to put on a class digitally. Mayor Charlie Fulton is on our board, and he has made provisions for us to teach this class through the internet at his center in Lanes. Stan will have a series of days in which he will teach people in general, but particularly African-Americans, how to research their roots. That's what our archives is about, archiving family information. We just had last week a family come in from Arizona, out west, African-American family. They were so delighted to have an opportunity to go in our recording booth and record the history and information about their family, which will be preserved in our archives. Anyway, Stan is going to conduct this class, and it's quite extensive. I said, Stan, how do you know how to do this? He said, well, I didn't know how to do it. He said, I was asked by Chubba Chaka's family to investigate their roots. They wanted to know where they came from. Who were the slave owners who enslaved their people, and where would they come from? He said, I scratched my head, and I said, I'll try. Well, he said, I got lucky. I got information, and I started figuring out what records are available to this information, census records, wills, deeds, all kinds of records. He traced down and found out exactly where they came from, which plantations at that time, I think they were in Berkeley County, Williamsburg County, some in Georgetown County. He did the research and found out where they came from. It was remarkable, remarkable piece of research. So Stan is going to conduct this class free of charge, is part of what we do. So we've got a lot of things going on. Those are the major projects out there now. So what do we need? This is our budget, and right there, boom, you see, we got $6,000, that's now $950. I'm not blaming anybody, it's just it is what it is. You know, the county's having the same kind of economic hardship, and we in the same boat. So you see what the problem is, but right below that, you will see, last year, we came before you and asked that each one of you provide $500 out of your county council member contingency fund, and we would ask that you do that again to help us. Where the rest of it's going to come? We're going to work on it. Obviously, we're going to have to dip into some pockets, but we've already dipped in so many in building the project, but people realize that we are a viable organization providing a significant service, and we're going to try to raise some more money as we go forward. We'll handle that project. That's on us, but we would ask you tonight to contribute $500 each, as you have done in the past, to get us past that mark. This is a real budget. There's no, there's no air in it. Light bills, and that's what it is. We ask you for that, and that's our presentation, and whatever you can do, the Historical Society deeply appreciates it, and we continue to invite you to come to our events. Come enjoy it, and I'll tell you what, I'll give you money back if you don't like it. Of course, they are free. So, thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Jenkinson.
Anybody here?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead, absolutely.
Mr. Jenkinson, I didn't hear you say a starting date for him. Mr. Charlie, Mayor Fulton's going to start that workshop or whatever. What's the starting date?
We are working on a date with Stan. It's going to be, it's mentioned in my memo. I'm not sure the exact date, but it's not in there. It's a work in progress. We've got a partial grant application, and we've already been told it's coming, but we got to put the money in our hand before we can actually do it. But Mayor Fulton is already, you know, we set up there, we just got to get the money to pay Stan. That's where we're at.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkinson, just one point of clarification. Now, the African-American Museum is a part of the Historical Society. Is that correct?
Totally, own totally.
All right. So as it relates to funding, if we're contributing to the African-American Museum, that in essence is also contributing to the Historical Society, correct?
Either, yes, sir.
Okay. So I just want to make sure the council is aware that what we did in this past budget was that we contributed initially $1,000 to each one of the museums, because we also have a third museum in the county, the Margaret Rush Museum. We wanted to make sure that we were equitable with all three museums, and so we gave each museum the same dollar amount. But if you all recall, we had that 5% reduction in order to get the budget passed, balanced and passed, and that's what dropped it from $1,000 to $950, that 5%. And so I wanted to make sure that council, you know, I just want to bring this to y'all's attention, that, you know, we gave to both, to all three museums, and we gave each one of the three museums the same amount of money. Now, and so I just, I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out. Yes, sir. I thought some of you all had some questions, okay?
No, that's correct.
Yes. I wanted to, I wanted just to remind you all of that.
And I'm glad to hear that, because we were told we only got $950, and that was why I made that statement. So we're actually going to get $1,900, which is still, you know, considerable shortfall, but we just have to pull on our big-boy pants and do the best we can.
Well, that's what was budgeted.
Yes, sir, and I understand that. I'm not here complaining about what was budgeted. I'm just saying that's facts, and we got to deal with those facts.
Right.
As I was explaining, we're not going out of business or, we just got to have to start doing the best we can.
Right.
But we do need the 600, I mean, the $500 if you would consider doing like you did before.
Right.
Not for both, that will be for both museums. We don't call them both. It's one in the same. It's the Williamsburg County Museum, and one happens to be the museum, and then one happens to be the African-American Archives, because that is the sole purpose of that building, but we don't, it's one here, you know, it's one budget.
Right. And I want to point out that...
to start doing the best we can. But we do need the $600, I mean, the $500, if you would consider doing like you did before. Not for both, that will be for both museums. We don't call them both. It's one in the same. It's the Williamsburg County Museum, and one happens to be the museum, and then one happens to be the African-American Archives, because that is the sole purpose of that building. But we don't can, it's one here, you know, it's one budget.
Right. And I want to point out that, you know, if council so desires, as well as myself, if we desired to do that, then that would put you, Mr. Jenkinson, $200 short of where you were, because we have, well, 700, because we only have six council members now. We don't have the seven.
I was hoping we could approach that new council member and make an ask for him.
Sure, absolutely.
That was part of my...
But I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out, that, you know, the 1,900 that we've already placed in the budget, 950 for the Historical Society, 950 for the African-American Archives. And if council decides to do the same thing that they did last year and the year before, all members of council and myself, that would be 4,000 on top of the 1,900, which would make it, what, 5,900, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll only be $100 short.
Well, not exactly, because in this budget, we actually got 6,000 plus 3,500.
Well, I pulled our records, well, no, it's important. I pulled our records, and we cut that budget before I, it was way before I got here. It's back in the 1819 fiscal year. And we went down from 4,000 to 1,000 in each subsequent year after the 2018, 2019 budget. The, you all received $1,000 each year. So it only went down $50 between this year and last year, is what our records indicate. Again, if, now if you add in the $500 from the county supervisor and all seven members of council, the 4,000 plus, you know, that 1,000, you would be at 5,000, plus another 1,000, if you got that 1,000 from the African-American Museum, that would be 6,000.
And that's a great help towards our problem.
All right. All right, very good.
For that, we appreciate.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything else for Attorney Jenkinson?
Mr. Supervisor, I would just say I have no problem with, and I'm not trying to influence anyone else with my $500. I'm fine.
All right. All right, very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Jenkinson. All right, so we now have our audit presentation, fiscal year 2021, 2022, by Mr. Gary Love, Love Bailey and Associates. Please bear with us a moment, give Mr. Bailey an opportunity to... Okay, Mr. Bailey, can you hear us? One moment, please, we're gonna try to get the speaker, speaker up. Okay, let's try it again, Mr. Bailey, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
All right. Let's see if we can adjust your speaker a little. Ladies and gentlemen, please bear with us just for a moment. It seems to always work when you test it. All right, let's try it again, Mr. Bailey. I mean, Mr. Love.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go, yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. All right. All right, Mr. Love, if you would, please, just give us a brief introduction of yourself and the services that you provide to the county of Williamsburg, and a brief overview of our, of this audit report.
Sure. Yeah, like you said, I'm Gary Bailey. I'm the managing member of Love Bailey and Associates, and we are, we're your financial statement auditors. This is our second year, and we basically audit governments and nonprofits around South Carolina and Georgia. So what we're presenting here today is your 2022, 630, 2022 audit. I think you all have a copy of it. So as you know, when we are working as an auditor, we come in and we're auditing your trial balance, your numbers. And once we've gotten through our procedures, our required procedures that the standards require us to audit, then we issue an opinion. And we're given, basically given the county some type of assurance on those numbers. Unfortunately, for the 630, 22 audit, we had to issue a disclaimer of opinion. Basically, what that means is we're giving no assurance on the numbers, on the county finances at this time. Let me go a little further into that. As you know, the county began a process in '22 of converting the accounting system from QS1 to the SAP system, as well as outsourcing your payroll functions to ADP. This conversion, you know, both the accounting system and payroll is a very difficult task to begin with. But then, the county had staffing shortages, making this conversion a disaster. And as you know, Chris Clark, Mr. Washington hired Chris Clark, who has a lot of experience. He's come along with Meredith, and they've spent a tremendous amount of hours trying to get the general ledger reconciled, to trying to make sure all the transactions are recorded in the correct accounts, making sure the balance sheet items are correct. A lot of this has been complete, but there's still some items that hasn't been completed. So we don't have a complete trial balance at this time to be able to complete all of our audit testing. We have tested a tremendous amount of transactions, but we still have some more audit work to be completed. So that's the reason we have to give you a disclaimer of opinion at this time. As you know, under state law, counties are required to have an annual audit, and it's supposed to be submitted to the state by January 1st of each year. So, in Mr. Washington's defense, when he came on board January 3rd, your audit was already late, the accounting system was, was a disaster. Sorry to be so blunt, at that time. So, when, by state law, if you don't issue the audit report by January 6th, then the state treasurer is required to start withholding funds to the county. So the funds that go through the state treasurer's office, that they collect, or funds that, by the state budget, that they're allocating to the county, all of those funds are withheld, which obviously has a huge financial impact to the county being able to continue to function and provide services. So, we're issuing this report to hopefully help the county not have any more holdup on getting funds released. So, the next phase here is, I know Chris and Meredith are gonna continue to work on the '22 general ledger, as well as the '23, to get the last of council '22 reconciled. Love Bailey will continue to complete the remaining audit procedures as the general ledger is reconciled. Once all these audit procedures are complete, we should be able to reissue the report with an opinion. As I said, currently, we're not issuing any opinions of the financials. So the goal here is to get the county with an audit report with an opinion. And hopefully, at that point, I can come down in person and present those numbers and go through them with you. Apologize, I couldn't be there today in person, I just got back in town. But that's kind of the process of where we are, and how you've gotten there, and what that current audit report is stating. Again, it's just basically stating that we're giving no assurance on those numbers at this time. I'm glad to answer some questions, but that's sort of what the process is. And Mr. Washington, I know you may have some more to add to this, but that's kind of where we are as far as the '22 audit right now. And apologize, I can't see anyone, so I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? We do have our finance director, Ms. Meredith Green, and Mr. Chris Clark here with us as well. I mean, if you all have any questions for either one of them, I'm sure they'll be glad to entertain those questions. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
I think I understand why you said, you know, you couldn't issue an opinion, but I guess just from what you've been able to go over the records, what's been reconciled thus far, what have you been able to find?
No, we have, through the transactions that we've tested so far, we haven't, if you're asking maybe if there's any fraud been found, we haven't found anything like that. Nothing that, it's really just, what we have found is just, really just a lot of controls are missing as far as reconciling, timely reconciliations back to your ledger, making sure accounts are posted to the right, transactions are posted to the right accounts. So currently, right now, you couldn't pull, in particular, before Chris and Meredith got to work on this, you wouldn't have been able to pull any type of legible financial document to let the council know how the finances are going with the county. But we haven't found anything that looks like fraud at this time, but again, we're still, we're still working through the audit right now.
Yes, I have a concern as well. I noticed when I was just thumbing through it and reading a little bit of the recommendations and findings, one of the thing that jumped out at me was the fact that there was a lot of, I don't know about a lot, but there was some duplication of payments that were made to vendors. Was that extensive or just a few?
I don't think it was extensive, but it was, it was a good number. And I apologize, I don't have that exact number. I can get that for you, what we found, but maybe Meredith may have some more information on that. But really, I think that part of that is trying to use two different systems, and neither one of them really functioning very well for you. And so part of that is the problem for duplication on some of the AP.
Okay. And I thought I saw something about a recommendation where you said that if we had a different type situation in place, that could possibly rectify some of that. Would that be something that would cause, would be cost-effective? I know it's saving money, I guess it would be cost-effective, but would that be very costly to put in place what you were referring to?
No, sir. I think what I'm really referring to there is just having a proper, you know, enough staff to handle the amount of transactions that's coming through the county. And then, so having the staff and then having the controls and processes in place to capture the invoices when they come in, make sure they're properly approved, and make sure they're properly put into the system before they're paid. So really, it's more of a process, having the amount of staff you need and the processes in place to make sure that you don't have duplication. It's not necessarily that you need any software or any spending money there, it's really more just getting good processes in place to properly capture, approve, and enter the transactions.
Okay.
Because if I remember correctly, Meredith may correct me, I believe your billing clerk had some health issues as well during this time period.
Yes.
Or one of the payroll, one of the clerks there in the county department.
We did, in finance, we've had a lot of turnover since 2021. Started like the beginning of 2021, end of 2020. We went from a payroll person, an AP person, who ended up sick. She had health issues. We ended up having to double-team the AP. And in that process of double-teening AP, we were also transitioning into SAP. And a part of transitioning into SAP, we had to get information pulled out of the old system, placed into the new system. Well, there were some kinks in that, because we actually started the new system in 2021. July 1 was our live date for the new system SAP. But the pulling of the data out of QS1, some of it also ended up being duplicated in SAP as well. So it has really been a struggle. That's just the short version of one component of SAP that we've been using. But it's just been a real struggle, because the system is not a governmental system. It is not a system that works for us. Actually, it is a system that works for extremely large manufacturing industries, and we're not that. But it's just been, it's been rough. It's been rough. But in terms of, as Mr. Gary said, we have, we have to definitely, we can use more staff in order to get where we need to be. But with having Chris to come in to help us clean this stuff for the general ledger, it's been getting better. We are 95%... Chris, you would say? About 95% to where we need to be. We're not going to stop until we get it done. But we're at a place where we had to decide whether or not we were going to continue to have funds withheld, or give the state our report, letting them understand that, yes, this is a report with a disclaimer, meaning that it's not quite where it needs to be. They're making a diligent effort to do what needs to be done. And when they get it to that 100%, or at least that 99.999%, Mr. Gary will come back and say something slightly different.
Okay, Meredith, once we get it in place and get things back on par, you feel like with the current staff we have, without getting additional staff, because I heard he said that staffing was a problem, once we get things up to par and back on track with the staff that we have now, without hiring additional staff, we can maintain?
At this point in time, based on the question that you're asking me, if we move to a new system, which is our intent, we plan to go to what is called Spring Brook, which Spring Brook is actually similar to QS1, the system that we moved from, which is a governmental system. We're gonna move to Spring Brook, with Chris being here to help us making sure that we're coding things properly and putting them, and let me correct this as well. The staff that we have is very, very capable, very competent, and we know what we are doing. The system that we have is a system that does not fit us. The learning curve was not there that needed to be there. The people that were doing it are gone. So you end up with the people that's there now, and we're, it's almost like we jumped in the water and we've been swimming, you know? And I don't swim, but I've been trying to swim. But to answer your question directly, I know we're gonna do better, but we have to get this stuff straight first. And with us moving back to a system that is more familiar to us, I feel confident that we'll be fine.
Okay. Thank you, Meredith.
Meredith, is there a timeline on when that system will be coming online? And, I mean, we've had the issue of having departments with different systems, so will everyone be on the same system?
Not really. That has been one of the goals that we've been pushing towards. But what you have to remember is downstairs is taxes. And taxes is different from what, how we function upstairs. We're finance. We're that general ledger that has to take all the tax stuff, that when Mr. Gary comes in, that's what he looks at. He looks at the second floor, but the second floor is predicated upon the first floor. So their system of what they're using for the taxes, the whole process, when we get it, because we're on two different systems, unfortunately, we have to make sure our data that they give... we have to make sure our data that they give us is properly done in order for it to be financially funded information that needs to be audited. I don't think at this time, because the tax office is very comfortable with the system that they have and because the fact that they've used it for so long, and it does work for taxes, it is a good system. For the finance side, however, we're the ones that have to adjust. We have to fit in where we get in, so to speak. So the closest we can get is with the Springbrook software, which is a company that bought out QS1, who said that we're not QS1, but we can create a program that acts like QS1. I would rather have that right now than have SAP straight out. I would rather have that. So our timeline is July 1. Initially, we're going to try to start transitioning back because we've been in conversation with them. Chris has had an implementation recently with his other company that he works with and other client, and he knows that process. So, and because I've been through two processes since I've been here, I know what I don't want. And I've told Mr. Washington, and Chris knows this as well, my ultimate goal for the finance department is to be efficient and effective. I don't want us to, we have a clean sheet of paper right now in terms of 2023. Yep, we got the revenues for 2023 in the system. The entries that need to go in for 2023 are not there because I want Chris and Mr. Gary to say, okay, let's do this properly because we have to use this SAP system for the 2023 fiscal year and the 2024 because we're not going to jump into Springbrook until July 1, 2024, which will be our '25 fiscal year. I want us to get this information in right. I want it to be proper. I want it to be where we can get a clean bill of health. Right now, we got a couple of broke body parts, but it's okay. And I say it's okay because, again, you have a team of people who, with the support that we have, they're trainable for the areas that we are lacking, we're going to be fine. We just need you all to just understand that, support us, and just give us that leeway. And I promise you, it's going to be all right.
All right. And so again, just for my clarity.
July 1.
July 1, and those systems will be able to work with one another?
It will be.
For lack of better terms?
For the lack of better terms. We'll go back to, fingers crossed. What we did in the past is, the treasurer's office gives me a file because their system is QS1 or was QS1 downstairs, or it still is. And ours was QS1. I took their file and dump it into my system. So what they had downstairs now sat in front of me upstairs. But I had to do some work on it to make it become the report that we need for auditing purposes and all that kind of stuff. Hopefully, we will go back to that. But we're going to be in a system called Springbrook. Based on what they've shared with us, it will work. So July 1, 2024, we should be back in a system that's going to give us governmental financial statements that are auditable, that doesn't require as much head scratching as this SAP system does. SAP was just not a good move. It just wasn't.
And I'd like to also add, thank you so much, don't go anywhere. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Green, for that explanation. That was awesome. Thank you. Initially, you know, I wanted to try to move this process along a little quicker. But I had to accept the fact that we were dealing with some things that were just simply out of our control. And there was no need in getting in a hurry to push something through and repeat past mistakes. And so I wanted to make sure, you know, we want to get this done right. It needs to be done right. You know, right now, we're paying for two software packages, for two accounting software packages. I'm paying for two of them. And in order for us to have just some somewhat valid numbers and legitimate stuff, I've got, we've got to pay for two of those because I need both of them right now until we can get to a place that we can transition to just one. Anytime that you transition to a government, a new software package, that transition in itself is, is an extremely heavy lift because you're going to lose some data without even trying to lose data. You're going to lose some data. Well, not only did we try to do a software transition in account, in our finance department, at the same time, we tried to do a payroll transition all the same month, same time. That, nobody does that. It's just not feasible. And so we're trying to take what we, what we have and trying to repair it, fix it, but get it where we can move, move forward. I'm glad that Meredith is here to explain this. And I have to admit, you did a better job than I believe I would have been able to do. But I recall, you know, a leadership class that I took years ago, and they said, you know, sometimes, sometimes, it's not always good for the boss to talk. Let that, let that sergeant that's been out there working accident, you know, that's, that's out there, you know, was there when everything happened? Let them explain it because they'll be able to explain it a better way than you can. So, but now you have a higher rank.
Got him to, and I know he promised you all the 23 audit, it's going to be December. It's going to be December. And we were like, yeah, okay. I don't think that's going to happen in December, sir. But it's coming. It's coming. And he finally, you know, realized that it is what it is.
Yeah.
But it's getting better. I can honestly say it is, it's a lot better than it was.
And I also want to, point of clarification, you do have a much higher rank than a sergeant, okay? I just, just thought I wanted to just, I wanted to point that out. But I want to thank you and Chris, Gary, your staff, our entire team here. I see these folks day in and day out. And I want you all, the members of council, to know, and also want the public to know. These folks are committed. They're dedicated to the success of Williamsburg County. And I am, I am beyond blessed to serve with folks who love this community as much as I do. As Councilman Floyd and I were speaking, you know, a couple of months ago, we both agreed, we're not where we need to be at, but we're not where we were earlier this year. And so we are making progress. We may not be making it as quickly as I would like, but we are, we are making progress. And it's, it's painful at times, but we're moving, we're moving the ball forward. And I want to thank this council. I want to thank you all, each one of you all, for your confidence in me and confidence in our staff. And I also want to thank you all for your patience. And I also want to thank the citizens of Williamsburg County for their confidence and their patience with us as well as we move this county forward. Anyone with any other questions from Ms. Green or for Mr. Clark? All right. Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the audited basic financial statements presented by Love Bailey and Associates early, earlier tonight. Is there, is there a motion?
Some movement, Chair.
We have a motion by Councilman Floyd to accept the audit report. Is there a second?
Second. Councilwoman Hales.
Second by Councilwoman Hales. We ready for questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, we have a matter to discuss in executive session according to Section 30-4-70. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Have a good evening.
All right, thank you. All right, there we go. All right, so we have an executive session according to Section 30-4-70. A1, we have a matter to discuss in executive session. It's a personnel matter concerning the tax assessor's office. Is there a motion to go into executive session? We have a motion by Councilman Woods to go into executive session. Is there a second? I'm in Florida. Ready for questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, we will be in executive session.
Sounds good to me.
Some move.
We have a motion by Councilman Woods to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Floyd. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion has been carried. There were no decisions made in executive session. No decisions made in executive session. All right, county supervisors report. I've got a couple of things that I did want to bring to the public's attention while we're here. Because of daylight savings times in the, in it getting darker a little bit earlier, we're going to be closing our recycling sites just a little bit earlier. We're going to be closing them at five thirty, beginning Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Again, that's beginning Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Now, that will not affect the other times, you know, the times that they're opening or the times that they're closing for lunch. It will only impact just that evening. And it also won't impact, have any impact on the days of operation. Just the ending time, and it'll only be just while we're in daylight savings time. We've also done our second round of town hall meetings. We've already had one meeting over in Hemingway with Councilman Lee on last week. And then last night, we were down in Bloomingvale with Councilman Wilson. So we have a couple of dates that I want to, to make you all aware of as it relates to our upcoming town hall meetings. District seven, Councilwoman Hales, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, will be at the Felician Center on Thorn Avenue. District four, Councilman Woods, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, will be at the Mazan Fire Station. District three, Councilman Miller will be, November second, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, will be at the Hopewell Senior Daycare Center. And district six, Councilman Floyd will be determined at a later date. And district five, as we know, is still vacant. Again, as we said earlier, we said that we wanted to do two meetings in each one of the council districts per year and try to do those meetings at different locations to give you all, the citizens of Williamsburg County, an opportunity to come out and, and meet and talk with your county councilman and myself, the county supervisor, and try to address any issues that you all might have. Again, we want to thank you all for your patience. Thank you all for listening in with us tonight. Do we have anything from the members of council to report? Okay, with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Lee. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you all, and have a good evening. Second by Councilman Lee. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you all, and have a good evening.